Good afternoon. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission, October 19th, 2006. It's 2:35. Everyone on the commission is present. We take sworn statements. If you plan to -- I'm choking myself on my microphone. If you plan to make any statements, would you please stand up and raise your hand and affirm that what you'll say is be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Our first case is lot 6, lot 6. Mr. Daniel Kincaid, 294 Carroll Road. It's a minor subdivision with variances, and we've had this before us before. Information on it anyway.
My name is Steve Pearson. I'm a zoning administrator for the city of Athens, Ohio, and also an Athens representative to the Regional Planning Commission. A couple meetings ago, Mr. Kincaid, who lives on Carroll Road, had a proposal to subdivide his property. On page two of the information that I just gave you is a copy of the existing survey. And there was some question because of a case we had up in the plains about was an easement going to be sufficient, or should they actually have public road frontage back out to Carroll Road? In this particular case, the Planning Commission's recommendation was that it be an easement because of the narrowness of the access point to Carroll Road. What I did on this was I sketched in a 30-foot easement that basically contains the drive, existing driveway, and area for installation of water and sewer service. I sketched in another on the back here, a proposed back lot line that meets the zoning requirement of at least 30 feet away from the existing house. I also sketched in a 25-foot front yard setback for the lot that would -- could be created in the rear. Additionally, the measurement from the edge of the existing house to this pin in the corner right here is 26 feet. That's why that narrows down from 30 to 26. So there will still be room for a driveway and utility installation. But I just wanted to indicate that that was narrower right there than 30 feet. Maybe I ought to back up a little bit. Mr. Kincaid was not able to attend, so I told him I would do this presentation on his behalf. The next page that you have, the information is a kind of a mock-up of a maintenance agreement and an easement for -- between the two property owners. In this particular case, I actually added Mr. Kincaid's name. Wouldn't know who to add as the owner of lot 2, which he says will probably be some in-laws of his. But that's just for now. We have to make sure that somewhere out in the future, no matter who those two property owners might be, that their property rights are protected. So I added language that doesn't normally occur in one of these mock-up agreements. I added their heirs, successors, and assigns. In other words, whoever owns the property, Kincaid's or anybody else, be their responsibility to live by this agreement. This is based on what the county uses as their recommended easement agreement. If you look in number three, it talks about if the parties have a dispute, they utilize the Athens Area Mediation Service. That's what they do on a county level. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. It does have a way to intercept some problem without actually people obtaining attorneys. And it is stated in a document, "That should be your first course of action if you ever do have a problem." I also added in there because it's a paved driveway right now. The mock-up agreement talks about gravel. I just put in there gravel or other mutually agreeable surface, but the maintenance terms are all the same. And this is as close to a 50-50 type deal between the two property owners as possible for maintenance on the areas they share in common. What it includes is where you go off of this common area, it's your responsibility 100 percent to take care of that. It's 50-50 on the shared area. So hopefully this is what the commission was looking for. And like I say, I had Mr. Kincaid's permission to present, and he said that he would be agreeable to whatever was the pleasure of the commission, especially on this document, the maintenance agreement.
Again, if you have any questions, Mr. Pearson?
Yeah. And if this is, I think my original memo when this case started a couple meetings ago included some additional things like variances necessary for a property, that may be necessary property without public road frontage. With the depth ratio now won't be a problem. It would have been if they actually had their own way that came out on the street. So right now, the only variance that I can think of that would need to go with a possible recommendation is the variance from the section that requires actual public road frontage. So it'd be easement in lieu of public road frontage. If you do recommend that, I can work with the clerk of council to make sure that that language does appear in the transmittal from the commission to the city council.
Well, it looks good to me.
It's good to me.
I think the motion needs to mention this maintenance agreement and make sure that it is included because I think that, down the line, prevent a lot of problems.
Yeah. Bob Eichenberg, the county planner and I both with minor lot splits that, you know, he and I are probably looking some years at a couple hundred countywide. And you are sympathetic with people because a lot of times it's, you know, I need my kids to help me at my property. Can they move in the backyard essentially? But we have to be more forward-looking than that. And I think this guarantees property owners' rights, responsibilities, you know. It actually puts them right out there and plus accommodates the situation that the current owner has. So hopefully it's a solution to both worlds.
The only thought I had, Steve, on this, that area that is shared, should we have some statement in there that both owners agree not to -- or do we have something that allows them access at any point in time? That I can understand, you know, somebody could be moving in, and you might block part of that in that momentarily, but you don't want to get into some dispute down the road where one person wants to drive fixed, the other doesn't. So they just start parking vehicles there. And Henry, because it's only a 10-foot -- how wide is that driveway?
Um, the driveway itself, well, that could be changed in this document. That's just the basic language in the model agreement is 10 feet. It could be 12. I could really say anything.
Well, it looked like on this map that it was 30 feet, but it's not really changed in 30.
30 feet is a description of the entire area necessary to also include utilities. And there's specific language in this about the actual paved surface. So I can see the point.
Well, this covers the maintenance, but it doesn't -- I guess it's just a thought that I had as I was reading through it. What happens if there is a dispute and somebody does one of the -- either party has to allow access through that -- I mean, it's a point in law anyway. I mean, you have the ability to go to court to get it, but we wouldn't want it to go that far.
Wouldn't this be an agreement --
That's maybe all right.
Yeah. Wouldn't this be an agreement in addition to the easement that goes in the deed?
Exactly. Because the easement description is going to be for 30 feet.
Right.
And there could be additional language added to that. Or there may even be an assumption in the granting of that, that there's no encumbrance involved. But I could make sure that --
That's my guess.
We could put some language -- I can make sure that there's language in their easement that would prohibit any kind of, you know, "I'm mad at you, so I'm going to park my car right here and take the wheels off" kind of a thing. And again, the final, even after council, if you'd make a recommendation, the council would ultimately approve this. Mr. Kincaid still does have to come back to my office to get an approval before he can go to the auditor and the recorder. So I can --
Sure.
There are a couple trigger points beyond today. And I think as long as that's reflected in the record, if it was in the minutes or even included in the recommendation, if it happens to council, you know, that way too, you know, six months from now, somebody else is looking at these, it'll be in the record. They can look it up. I can appreciate that quite a bit because I know how confusing it was for me when I first came in. There was a lot of institutional knowledge around, but it wasn't in writing. The next one in, next person in really had to shore sometimes to try to figure things out.
Mayor, are you saying that you would like to have it be 12, a minimum of 12 feet in width?
No, I just think that there has to be, probably in the easement language, that it's unrestricted. Because I could see, I mean, we're talking about a fairly long
There are a lot of places there.
Because that's, that's, the depth's like almost 200 feet on the one side, 168 or so on the other. That's a long stretch.
A lot of places there you could cause problems.
Well, I'm just thinking, you'd have the normal situation if someone had guests and quite a few. I mean, where, you know, in Carroll Road, there's a whole lot of places to park. And people aren't going to walk 250 feet to the house. They're going to park in the driveway.
What I don't have attached to this, and I think what will eventually clear that up, is say a mock-up deed for both properties. I didn't, you know, I didn't do that.
I think the maintenance agreement language is fine. I think the easement's the way to go. I just think anything else we can put in there to ensure unencumbered access to each property would be prudent to do.
Right. So the recommendation would be for guarantee that the easement language be included in the two proposed deeds and guarantee free and unobstructed access.
Something like that. Let me put it in legal words instead of mine.
And guarantee that the maintenance agreement be incorporated some way rather.
Attached to and incorporated by reference into the deeds.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a, this is another document that could be recorded separately or with the deeds at the same time. So that could be another condition, that this maintenance agreement also be recorded at the same time the deeds are.
I think that's great because sometimes they get, one gets put someplace and the other one, and they say, "Well, I didn't know. Was it with the deed?" sort of thing. Was that a motion you made a long time ago, whatever it was?
Well, it sort of was creeping that direction. Okay, I move that we approve this minor subdivision with the -- is there, there is a variance for the --
Public road.
Public road frontage.
And then the easement with the maintenance agreement.
And the easement and the maintenance agreement be recorded.
A condition, yeah.
Be a condition of that approval and be recorded some way rather referenced with the deed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Next case is lot 1, lot 1, University Estates, review of the proposed plat amendment. Who wishes to -- is Mr. Holmes going to make a presentation?
Yes.
You go up there and introduce yourself.
My name is Fred Holmes. I've been retained by University Estates to work as their vice president of governmental relations. There's two things that we want to, that I'd like to talk to you about. The first would be the plat amendment, and then I would like to talk to you about the preliminary plan. On the proposed plat amendment, the issue that we've been talking about has been the Greenview Lane. And there is no road bond currently on Greenview Lane. And we've had discussions on possibly eliminating it. But after looking at it and evaluating it today, University Estates will be seeking a road bond for that. So that just solves a whole variety of issues without having to see which buildings would have to be removed. So we will be in a process of seeking a road bond for Greenview Lane. And I'm not -- let me see if I can.
Okay. This has just happened, isn't it? This is the first, where's the rest? Greenview goes a long way besides that, doesn't it? This is the first.
It's hard to determine.
It's over here. It's right here, but where does it go? It comes way down around.
Down to hit arms.
Yeah, okay.
Which would be right, right there. Or on this map here, would be this area right here. And I think one of the issues has been is that they provide an access if there was a problem, an accident on 682, that city vehicles would be able to get in to the property, at least until this whole section here is completed around the golf course. So, and these were, the reason a road bond wasn't included is that this was going to be one of the last or towards the end. But there's just too many issues to take if we abandon that road. So it's really important that we keep that. So a road bond, we'll be thoughtful for that. There's 2.7, 2.74 acres has been carved out in this area right here. There was an opportunity, we felt like, to put another housing unit in there. And that has, I don't think, has reflected on our current plat. So that'll have to be changed. Would be this area right here. Now, this is only a 60-foot frontage, so we're not sure if we have enough room to move that over and make it 66. If not, then we'll be coming to the zoning board of appeals for a variance.
On this one, Fred, there was a question on the right-hand side because if you go above Alt. 1, there's nothing that indicates this area up here and the lots it's in.
This has been divided into three lots, and actually, there's four here. Because this one here, what we're proposing is make this 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D. And that'll clarify.
What about this?
That would be part of 7B. Also, there is a question, I believe, on acreage. This portion down here, and this I'm going to have to ask your advice on, this piece of property has not been transferred. And we're not at the position right now to transfer that property. Can we make a notation on it, or do you want to change back on the plat to reflect what it actually is now?
Well, as I recall, this lot was purchased by Elizabeth Conard. All of the rest of this is owned by University Estates, which is owned by Richard and Elizabeth Conard.
That's true.
Okay. But what's happened with this one lot is it's really gone into lot big, lot one bigger, lot two bigger, and lot three. And also gets the tail end here of one coming down this way, I guess, all the way to here. So my question, what is really, I mean, when we replat, we wipe out some platted lot that has a different owner. So they really need legally to solve that. Or, I don't know legally what we've really done, but we've taken somebody's property and added it to three different other lots owned by another legal entity, which that person is a part of that legal entity. Gets confusing. But technically, I don't know, and it's really a law lawyer question, we don't have any in the room, I don't think. But that's why I was asking when we did our internal staff review and met with Fred, I pointed this one, and Steve pointed this one out, in saying, we need to get this in the same ownership. Because it's going to cause problems later on if you ever try to transfer that property.
I think, and I'm clearly open to suggestions, but I think what may be the easiest is just revert back to where it is currently. And when, when, when it's ready for that piece of property to be transferred, we'll have to replat it.
See, the original plat that we've approved has, this has been lot 11, which I think was owned by the Hope family, somebody in the Hope family. And that's, that's the one we're talking about.
I mean, I asked if we can make a, if we can make a notation there in some type of legal document, that certainly would make it easier on us. But I don't want to confuse, you know, I want to, I want to make it as unconfusing as possible. We're, we're open to suggestions on that. But you're absolutely correct. That, that transfer, that piece of property has not been made. And it will be, the plans are for it to be transferred, but this is not the right time.
And I just wanted the board to see that this was what, this is what's recorded right now. So this, when they carved out this 2.7, that goes from open space to a residential lot. And then when the reconfiguration of all this, we had this kind of middle open space, 13 sort of went down here to that cul-de-sac and over to this and over. Now it just goes, right there's open space for, I don't know, 26 feet wide or something. How big is it? 107 feet long?
Yeah. One of the questions I've been --
And then all this goes away as open space.
Was why would this configured the way it is?
We have no idea.
That is for possible future development of this lot right here, lot 11. We don't have any immediate plans for it, but it could be developed. And that's why it's configured the way it is.
Does this go, these come here and these go this way? I mean...
You're talking about the traffic lot?
Yeah. What is this here? Just a dead end?
It's sort of a dead, it's sort of a 90. As not, you really couldn't classify it as cul-de-sac. Like I said, we put that and designed that in there so that this could, you know, possibly be developed later on.
Do you know why the configuration down here on this corner piece of property, property 1?
Down here.
Why it's configured with the long tail on?
Right here.
Yes, I know where.
Yes. This is going to be developed in commercial, and they were thinking of utilizing this as possible parking. That's what you're talking about, this, this light right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right here, not, not this one, but this one right here.
Yeah, right.
Across the street.
Well, then you've got this thing that goes back in there too.
Well, this is Armageddon Road, right?
Yeah, that, but this right here. So you have this thing here, and then you have a line here, and then this goes back in there. I mean, you have one, two, three spaces in there. This is a weird space too. I like them neat, just draw the lines straight.
It's obviously have a purpose.
What's this going to be, this?
Tail end of that. Well, that's, that's, this piece right here.
The part that's attached to three.
Here. So it goes all the way back to there. It comes down here, and it goes over here and over to there, and then it goes all the way over to...
It did before too.
Well, I mean, even before, I wondered what it was doing.
It just left of it.
So we're talking about, you're talking about right in here? Is that where you're talking about?
No.
No, it's further back towards 682.
Yeah, closer to 682.
It's the, it's the tail of lot three.
We're back for most things. We're back over in...
Yeah.
See that green space there?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Yeah.
That doesn't match.
I can't totally relate it to that because you've got this long green space there, right?
Right here.
Is that lot three? No.
That should be lot three. The bicycle path is proposed to go up through here and then connect into the road. So that would be green space, yes.
Now, where on the one that you've got over there, where is the proposed commercial space that's...
Right in here.
Yeah, lot 1, to the north or whatever.
Well, you've got commercial, potential commercial space in here and here, and then right in here, right in that area right there.
All right. So the one that you just pointed to is the one where they're also up above it saving parking space, right?
Right in here.
No.
Right along through here.
It's the tail end of all.
Two pieces. Green tail up there is split.
Where's Armageddon?
It's in two pieces. It's in two pieces.
One of those shows out of green until one.
This is Armageddon.
And that green is split in two pieces.
Armageddon Road, we come right in through there.
Okay, then...
It seems to have over there and some of it's the stream.
I can't relate it to this, do you think?
That's a different configuration on the far end of lot three.
That, you said, was going to be commercial, right?
Well, that's, that's outside of the project.
Oh, all right.
That's the other side of Armageddon Road.
So then they're saving this for parking.
This is going to be commercial.
Commercial's going to be right here.
Something for parking.
That was my fault.
This, I think, is green. So this area had been green. It's now going to parking as commercial.
Bicycle path will come right up through here. Proposed bicycle path.
And the yellow part with the buildings on it that's next up?
Is lot four, I would presume.
About right here?
Lot four.
And that's, is that lot four?
The one next over to the right.
It ought to be lot four.
That's lot four, I think.
Well, went up, go, go left, cross the green, that, the yellow one, that one. What lot is that?
That's Grand Vista Village, right, which would be...
All right. Is that lot two?
Here's University, where's Grand Vista Village.
Yeah.
What is the date on that drawing right there?
Look the same.
What's the date of that?
April 22nd, 99, wait a minute. 99, I believe.
Well, see, that's the problem I'm having. I've got all these things that I took home to look at and the things where it made. All of these, these exhibits A, B, and C we get, they're all 1999. But when we get these things, they're different. And I would not want something that it shows now in a map like that that shows now, rather than trying to figure out how something in 1999 fixed into something. What's the date on this one? See a date on this?
2006.
This is 01, so, but it should be 0s. This is different. I don't think it's 01.
01 was when we approved the original plat.
But that was that.
That's this one.
But it doesn't match that.
Well, this is the amendment supposedly.
Well, see, I'm getting confused.
You're right. Probably be dated 2006.
I'm getting confused with pictures and colors and things. And, you know, I am. I'm just confused.
Well, they all match. We tried.
I think there's 1999 data saying that based on aerial photographs, aerial plot, that's the date of the flyover. Most of the dates match.
Well, then they should have put that on those maps for me to know that. Well, see, that's my problem. I'm having a little problem about which one is the first thing we saw, which is the second, which is the third, and which is, what are we doing now?
There's a line missing that looks like your, Fred. Because if I go here, this 13 and the match line, that's all open space. Now, then we have this dotted match line thing. And then this is, I tried to explain this the last time Lance was here. This green goes all and then connects. So we need to, if that's going, this side of the road's going to be a 7C or whatever, we need a line there as to where's the green and where's the lot, the proposed lot. Because I recall you got, there's two buildings there. And right now, they're in, they're currently approved, but they're in green space.
Okay. What are you talking about right here?
Somewhere in through, because this is green, green going. Well, actually, they were wanting to build two buildings here. And so somehow, a new line has to be drawn to come back over to make the green contiguous, because it's all lot 13. And make, well, this is a 7C, V, or whatever number you have. Did you follow my point on it? Because it doesn't delineate.
7A, 7A, 7B, 7C.
7C right now has no lot line because it goes on as the old lot 13 forever.
So we're just looking at the ma, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay. The match line is not a lot line.
That's right. That's not a lot line. I got its line.
Takes me a little, takes me a little bit of time, but I got it.
Because that lot line to me is, see, part of the purpose was he wanted to maintain, as I understand, a 50-foot green link here. So he'd probably be like, this is part of 13 too. It's green.
Okay. So you're talking, here's your 50-foot green link right here.
Right.
Okay. So what, okay, I see.
So somewhere through there, you've got to draw it on, on the actual provision, which goes on to the line.
Which may come close to the match line.
Which may be close to the match line, maybe. But there's going to be something down here that's going to be, you know, maybe something like this.
Okay, I understand.
So that your lot, your proposed lots are there, but here is still the green that circles the point. So that your lot, your proposed lots are there, but here is still the green that circles the place.
You're right, you're exactly right. Okay, good.
Let's add on the microphone a little bit.
Rick, Steve went to see if we've got a copy here. When the zoning designation came through, we did add some lines to clarify the recommendation. Are those what we need on here?
Well, we needed an actual surveyed lot line. And that's what they don't have, I mean, because at some point in time, who knows when, if the property ever transfers to somebody. I think it pro, and I believe that the plan is, is as, I'm getting ahead of myself to the next case. But as High Point Villas actually get approved and get occupied, that's going to be owned by Condominium Association, isn't it? So we're going to have to make sure we have a good surveyed lot line for that.
The next item, while we're waiting for them to come back, this stub right here that goes nowhere. We're taking that out.
Which of these is, which is that?
Is that Altamont?
Is that the number?
Well, that was the original.
10, yeah, Altamont Terrace.
Oh, okay.
Remove, yeah.
Okay.
I think I've covered most everything before that, I believe, but maybe not. Number 12, I think, has already been taken care of because we have two separate names for the roads. I think there was some confusion that we were going to use the same name for this road and this road.
Yeah, I thought it was confusing.
Now, do you, which is it? Is it Stone Ridge Court or is it Altamont?
It'll be one is got Stone Ridge Court and one for Altamont Drive.
Altamont's the one up here.
Yes.
And this is Stone Ridge down here.
Okay.
And number 13, we've already talked about making this 7, 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D. With the addition of the lot lines for what I'm calling 7C.
I'm going to back up a minute here because as I recall, I got it with me here somewhere. The bond we currently have calls for Altamont full construction bond. And just to resurface to you. So if this is Stone Ridge, is it included in the Altamont bond? Or is it, this is separate one that isn't bonded either?
I believe it's included, but that's something I certainly...
I'd have to look at the length versus what's on there.
Because when Lance was in here, he was calling that whole loop Altamont.
Yeah, but they, yeah, but now they changed it.
Because Altamont is supposedly, well, payments, that's just quantities.
And Stone Ridge, right?
Yeah, because see, the detail of the bond here doesn't refer anywhere to a Stone Ridge. But I don't know if these quantities...
I'd have to check the line.
So we have, well, it's not really length, it's...
We're like 5 yards, linear feet square.
Lots curb and gutter, 2,700 linear feet. So we don't know if from there, are there 2,700 linear feet?
It would be 13.
At $11, it has to be on both sides, so you have to divide by 2, that would assume. And just see how far does that go? Does it only go to here? I don't know.
Okay, that's something I'll research and I'll get back, get back from there on.
56, Lot 56A, what is that?
Boy, has 56A been added. They had to do a realignment of the road for the gas. And that opened up an opportunity to add that additional lot.
See, the other one had this gap.
Gap, I see.
Now there's no gap. So that's why these get renumbered. 62, is that 62 and 62A? And 62B?
52.
Or 52.
A and B and 53 and 54, 56 and 57.
So this open space got made into two more lots.
Yeah, 52A and...
And then at the back...
And then 56A is at the back.
But the reason for that was the realignment of the...
And then this road curvature.
Right, exactly. I don't know, let me go back and see if I...
We can throw the papers around.
I think I've covered all the questions I had. Were there any other questions on the plan?
Who's number four? Did you do that one?
Number four, if...
Which way?
Has to do with Greenville. Which is right here. From the discussions that we had, that if we, if we eliminated the road and we would have to eliminate, eliminate, I can better show it to you over here. Would have to eliminate the apartments down here in Lot 4. And, and really, if you eliminate the road, you're eliminating this whole area and access to these golf villas. So even though this is not an immediate plan, it, it's probably in our best interest to get a road bond for that. It creates too many problems not to do that. So that really answers 2, 3, and 4.
Yeah, 2, 3, and 4.
Steve?
Yes, sir?
You got the zoning map now, right?
Um, kind of.
Kind of? I like that answer. No, it hasn't been distracting, but what, what drew my mind is we're talking about replating. What, when we did the zoning and did the annexation, we felt was, we knew it was going to get replanted. Because the request had already been made and it just didn't know how close it was. Because when we talked about the areas that had not been subdivided yet, we put provisions in there that said these were approximate and will be determined upon the submission of a final, you know, whenever that phase comes in. I didn't know if that language applied to the whole thing. And are, are we getting into, like, on some of these, some degree of re, when we move the lot lines like this, do we get some more of that?
What the planning commission forwarded to council was this document right here where...
Well, like that tail, I can see it right now. That tail's already according to, when we zoned it, was open space. Well, now this tail on the other page, I won't turn back, is now going to be commercial, 3.
This is a more detailed map of this because these boundary lines couldn't be determined exactly at this time. Then there was more detail put to it. So really, this is what we need to look at.
And tried to say, okay, zoning wise, this is what we think it's going to be. But in reality, only these up to a certain pay, were already platted.
The language was to reconcile these lines as planning occurred.
Right.
Or PUD approval occurred, mostly for planning purposes. Because...
But this open space here has been changed. Because this part of it goes to that. And I don't see...
This one, right, this is where. Here and here. This is where it's been changed and here.
This lot doesn't look square with this. Because that's an R3. And this is an R3 and that's an R3 on this. And this is, see, that R3 cuts off up there. See how it cuts off on that plan? It doesn't go, this lot didn't go all the way. According to that map. We've got too many maps.
That's what my kind of...
And part of what maybe we need to be looking at here is, obviously, we're going to have to have whoever drew this up do all the revisions we've already talked about. And maybe one of the things is that you and I and Steve maybe need to get together with that person and say, where's the zoning? So make sure we're right on.
Needs to be an overlay map.
Needs to be an overlay map. Because it just doesn't look right when I compare these. Because that's a pretty big lot, 384 feet. It doesn't show it.
Okay.
But we're saying this doesn't match.
This thing's 384 feet up here. And when we look at the zoning, there's no touch of any of that.
There should be a 50-foot right here. Shouldn't, shouldn't there be a 50-foot corridor, green corridor?
Well, it doesn't go on the other side though, see? Down here. Of course, that's, that's not been platted.
That's true.
This, the green hasn't, but I mean, that link up there is not on this map. But it hasn't been platted yet either. So that would cover us.
This thing that you said you're taking out was Altamont Terrace?
Uh, correct.
So Altamont is only going to be the drive?
Road.
Okay, the road or drive?
It's a road.
Well, not on...
Well, it might be Altamont Drive, but it's...
Yeah, okay, yeah. And, and there isn't an ultimate drive? Okay, now I'm just trying to cut out the confusion for emergency vehicles.
Because ultimate's up here in 6, they talk about ultimate.
Yeah, and Altamont Terrace isn't going to exist, all right? I could see fire engines going round and round. And this one's still going to be Stone Ridge Court, right?
That's, uh, the way the margin here is Stone Ridge Drive.
Okay. Not that this is going to help.
Okay, yeah, all right. Did every, did every question get answered on this, the first 14 here in this section on the plat amendment? I'm not asking whether you agree with everything, I'm just asking if you had answered.
I really think we need to get some of these in map form.
Yes, well, that's what I said. 10 minutes.
Yeah, it's a...
It's got a lot of changes.
Yes.
Well, especially when we're looking at black and white and color. And it's, it's really hard for me to fix in my mind, which I do better with color.
Give you crayons and you couldn't color. I like colored pencils better than crayons.
Because this, on the zoning map, it looks like Lot 6 is open space.
How is it so far?
See, there's space below the R3, below Altamont.
We're talking right here?
Yeah, and that's Lot 6, right?
Right, correct. Just want to make sure.
Okay. So it is...
Wouldn't it make sense if we had an updated version that also shows the way it's actually being constructed? Plus it would show our zoning, the way that it should be. So if we approve it, we don't care what it was. What we want to know is what it should be for the future.
That would be very helpful.
I think we need to, if we can combine the zoning map with, with the plat recommendation to see if we've been in conflict, which apparently there appears that there are.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to match everything up because they are, they're all different.
Right.
The lines are different, the designations are different.
And then maybe a situation where we may have to, and I'm not sure what the process is, if, how difficult it is to change in the zoning, is that difficult or...
Well, I think we did, and when we did the zoning, we were saying a revision is in process right now, plus others have not been platted yet at all. So we recognize that and actual lines will be drawn at the time each one is approved. So I think that was the substance of our motion. So I don't think we need, we should be putting the zoning designations on the recorded plat map, the miler that we're going to do. But yeah, we should have an overlay that ends zoning on it. So that Steve, when people come in 15 years from now and he's still here, I'm going.
Being helped into the office.
Right. We'll have an accurate zoning that everybody agrees to at the time of this replating.
Well, I think what would also be helpful is that it would, but doing an overlay of the two maps, we would immediately be able to tell if there's been a conflict. And how do we, and then the question becomes, how do we resolve this?
Right.
Okay, is that a motion, you've made a motion move that we...
What did you hear?
I heard that we got to do it over. You didn't make a motion, you moved. I hate people saying make motions.
We do get updated.
Well, I think, I don't know if we need a motion or not, but...
Format that I... DVD or DVD, can I?
Ron Lucas did this, he would have it in, in format and get it for you.
And he took a document from University of State that your folks had done. And then the places where lines were missing between uses on his map, and they were just rough sketches. Then he put the lines in and everybody looked at it and said, yes, the planning commission checked it.
Okay. We'll work on it.
We're working with to begin with. We need to just refine the document.
But the problem is there are too many maps around saying, take this pile and all together and hide them. We don't want to destroy them, but we want to hide them until...
You may not want to see that map again.
I don't want to see that map. But if he, that's a motion, we didn't...
Can I use it for this afternoon?
Sure.
I promise you I will.
But like, so you've got like to the right of Greenville Lane? Those condos there are all surrounded by green, meaning open space under the color. Actually zoned at R3. Because that was what was on the, on their thing. When we did the zoning, that was a proposed R3, which would be appropriate.
Right, this area right here.
Right.
Yeah, and then this one here and then this one to the, to the, around the edge, right ones.
He, he moves that we have a new map.
Here.
Yeah, I second it.
Oh, in favor, say aye. Okay, so that we have it in writing that we asked to have it fixed. So we know where we are, which page we're on, right? Everybody on the same map. I'm going to throw all my maps in my bag away.
Back to the first, we're on the council.
See, this is filled with papers that I took and I looked through them all and they confused me. Okay, I'm strangling myself again. All right, and did we, where am I? Here it is. Okay, we did oh 1, oh 2. Now we need to do oh 6, one's case, oh 6, one 7, preliminary view of the PUD for the entire site.
I, again, I was...
I don't know. Fred Holmes, and I was hired by University of State, so thank you, I'll give you a little bit of my background, I won't bore you too much. You know, I was city manager in Eltonville for three years. I've got 17 years' experience in government, in state of Massachusetts, state of New York. I've worked with water and sewer. I've worked with DEP and DEC and ECA and numerous grants. So I guess one of the reasons that I was hired as a consultant was that I understand a little bit how government works. Understand the dog and the eye, the crossing the seas. And I really understand why the city has a requirement to view this, this project. So part of my job is to explain to them how the process works. Part of their job is to explain to me how private development works. So not only are they getting an education, but I'm also getting an education too. You've been involved in this much longer than I have. I've been with University of State for about a month. It's a single-family, multi-use, there's multi-family units here, there's commercial. It's a mixed use. And it's my understanding that when Mr. Rep was here for the preliminary hearing, that the recommendation was to bring the whole project in as a, as one unit. And then when he did the final, to come back and do High Point Village, Grand Vista, and, and do it individually for the final. And my, that, my understanding... Am I, is that my understanding correct on that?
Well, when you say the whole area, that's where we ran into difficulty in communications. Because we're not putting a PUD on top of R one. And we aren't putting a PUD on top of B three, because you allow more than one building in a B three.
Right, right.
We're really only concerned about those that we probably zoned R three, that are going to have multiple buildings on them. In either condo form, or villa form, or apartment living rentals, those kind of things. And then there was some discussion of the... I'm not sure what to do with the clubhouse area, because... Did we zone that B three? I thought, or what? Well, they talked about a conference center at one time.
Right.
They even attached to it. Then across the street kind of is a area that they almost wanted to call the town square. Well, we recommended you not zone that B, because if you zone it B, then you can never have residential on the ground floor. But if you zone it R three, yep, you can have the residential on the zoning board, but all B one type businesses are permitted within, by the zoning board, in that type of zoning designation. And again, if it's, if it's an R three, we may want to consider that as a PUD also. And then there were just some questions that staff had raised that, because they're, just need to be recognized within the PUD, because they may be problematic twenty years from now. Like there's a wide right-of-way as you go in, and there's pillars, and there's a gatehouse, and there's a arboretum, or some kind of a gazebo type structure.
Right, correct.
Most of those, when we look at the plat, are all the right-of-way. Which, you know, there's nothing recorded anywhere saying that's permissible. Because usually council's the only one that can grant permission to build a structure, even though it's a gazebo in a public right-of-way. So we thought that, yeah, we could do an overall conceptual thing and recognize some of those things. We even talked about banner arms that aren't usually out in, you know, kind of limited to the uptown area, and in major commercial thoroughfares. But from a marketing standpoint, today, they're there. And maybe that's the look University of State says a whole wants to have down the road. We just need to recognize those kind of things. And it probably as good as anything is in a preliminary that would identify those sites and those kinds of special conditions that the developer wants. Then each one, as it's developed, would have, going to go to a final. And what saves everybody is we don't have to go back to preliminary again, which takes three, four weeks. And so everything could go a little bit faster, is the hope.
There's a list of questions, would it be just helpful if we went down that list? Okay. Existing guardhouse and flagpoles at University of State Boulevard are located, as the mayor said, in the right-of-way. Are these to be maintained by the city if they are in fact in the right-of-way? The plans are for the University of State to maintain these facilities, and for that to be done through a homeowners association. Question two kind of goes to a similar thing when it talks about the monument signs at the entrance. And again, that would be similar to the guardhouse and the flagpoles. And then question three says, if one or two are correct, should there be an agreement with the city? And that is definitely yes. And we need, you know, we would welcome an opportunity to sit down and work out, you know, if we've got some suggestions or recommendations we'd like to make. But coming from government, I know if I was in the mayor's shoes, or if I was in Mr. Hazel's shoes, I wouldn't want to. It becomes an issue of priority. And the city's priorities may not be the same priorities of the University of State. So I think that would be, we feel that that would definitely belong in a homeowners association. Are the streetlights a responsibility of the city to maintain? And I guess the answer to that would be yes. What I thought, I don't know what you feel about that.
Well, I don't know that we can do a final answer. I mean, they are... I'm trying to remember which ones I've seen. I mean, the entryway has a look that's different. I don't know, until our city electrician or somebody looks at them to say, is this anything we've got in stock? Or is this something brand-new for us that we're going to have to maintain a separate inventory and everything for? Because we own some, a few streetlights in town, not a whole lot. But on Court Street, South Schaefer Street, there's certain areas that they're purchased. All they ask is to rent it from AEP. And we pay, I think, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year right now in streetlight rentals and electricity.
Well, I think they probably could be open for negotiation.
But those are probably ones that you purchased. So they are in ownership, and the question is, do we transfer the ownership to the city when we do the, in the right-of-way? And my only real question was, do I have to then maintain a separate stock of things? And, you know, that's got a certain expense. I don't know how, it's wired to what electrical meter. I have no...
You know, are they meters or you cost?
That's a staff question, I pass that one on.
I don't have the answer.
I don't expect you to, but those would be the things. Well, I think what Steve was spelling this out was, we should have what the developer wants. Our request, whatever you want to call it. Then if the planning commission is in somewhat agreement with it, then staff needs to be able to, those that become city responsibility, we have to do a little detail work to give them a little more information of, is there a long-term cost with this, et cetera, et cetera.
I know. And those are issues that we really hadn't even thought about, to be very honest with you. We talked about the scroll arms on the poles. And again, there would be, we assume that it would be something that we would sit down with the city of Athens and work out an agreement. The only further suggestion we had on that is that there may be an addition of some flowers or some floral arrangements on that. But is there an agreement with the university on some of their scroll arms? Do you have a similar agreement with them, or?
No, no.
Okay. Well, I think some, yeah, again, being, putting myself in the city's standpoint, I mean, there are certain things you would not want to put on the poles. And a lot of that's common sense, but it would not hurt to have it spelt out in a formal agreement. And again, the maintenance, we go back to the maintenance, what happens when they get ripped and torn? You know, whose responsibility is to replace it? Stormwater retention occurs on lots greater than five acres, as required by Title 27. These waters will be contained on-site, and a development plan has to be, you know, a plan has to be put together to address this issue. Wire Golf Villas proposed an open space where open space regulations prohibit residential buildings. You had the zoning map, and on the zoning map it showed, you know, that they were going for R three, I believe it is.
If I might, back on question six, on the stormwater detention. I just wanted to clarify that even though it says something here about lots greater than five acres, some of those areas where you combine lots for the development, those are subject to stormwater detention, based on the combined use, not just individual lot size. Like for the condos, we need a stormwater detention plan.
Okay. Okay, we addressed item number eight to seven. Is existing Armage Road proposed to be vacated? Yes, only the section located within University of State, which I believe would be... That's the old one right there. No, it'd be this one right here. I'm not sure.
Well, the old one...
Right here, it'd be this one right here.
Right.
Yeah. Why is the road indicated on the site plan as Armage Road identified as such when it's now not a public street? That was only done, it was only driven, if we refer to this as a site plan, it was only done for marketing purposes. We realize it's not been accepted by the city. Will there be a proposal to have the city accept a proposed new Armage Road? And the answer to that is yes. If so, will a bond be supplied or will the road simply be, has to be accepted? It's my understanding, and I, correct me please if I'm wrong, that a two-year maintenance bond equal to five percent of the cost of chip and seal will be provided to the city? Someone said that was agreed to, I don't...
Well, that, our requirement is of two-year maintenance bond at five percent. Our standard is not chip and seal, though.
I'm aware. Which goes to question number twelve. What construction standards proposed for the new proposed Armage Road? Anything less than city spec curb and gutter will require variance. At this point in time, I think University of State will be seeking a variance on this road. Whether or not it's granted is, I guess, up to the zoning board of appeals.
And council.
And city council.
I don't think it goes to the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay, I'm sorry.
Because it's a road, it would go to the planning commission and then the city council.
Okay. But I, and again, I have no idea what the outcome of that would be, but that's what our, what the plans are right now. Item thirteen, most proposed residential lots beyond B one appear long and narrow. Each will require variance from three to one depth to a width ratio. I believe you're talking about this area here. Right now, determination has not been determined whether or not they're just going to be shortened, or whether or not to go after a variance, but we're aware of that.
Yeah, that's, I think, why Steve put it down, just to make you aware of it. It's maybe five or ten years before you're...
Yeah, yeah. I don't see it as a major issue, but we do acknowledge it. And that's, you know, where we're at on that. When will the golf course construction begin? It's scheduled to begin the year 2007. Scheduled for completion in the year 2008. Number fifteen, several cul-de-sacs appear to be longer than the permitted a thousand feet, and will require variance. Again, we're aware of that, and if needed, we'll probably be seeking a variance on that issue. What is a CAD, as indicated twice on the plan, which I believe are right here, and also right here? And that stands for a common access drive, of which the homeowners would be responsible for the maintenance of that road.
What's an access drive for? We're, point to it again for me.
Right here, see where it is, right here?
So those houses back in, they don't have a way to get to the road? They don't have access, road frontage?
The frontage here, and here, and here, and here.
They're cut off?
Yeah. I think mainly what it is, see, there's one, just one side here, where, unlike here where you have housing on both sides, where you have a cul-de-sac.
There are one, two, three lots back up there that you have drawn that you have no way to get to. Three, and down here, you have one, two, three, four, five.
Well, because, again, that's a point, we wondered what it was, but it's also, it's a future plating.
Okay.
In the future.
Are all the lands currently owned by University of State contained in the PUD area? That goes back to the issue of Mrs. Conrad.
Right.
Yeah. So even though it is one and same, technically, it is not. And so that's why I put that on there. Is it, and it's presently their private residence that they're currently living in. Are any additional purchases of property anticipated? Quick answer for that is yes, but nothing definitive right at the present time. Is a substantial anticipated first? Did I mistype that?
Submittal.
Is a submittal anticipated first or final consideration of High Point Village as a PUD? And the answer to that is yes. We're hoping, and I'm not sure how, if it's even possible to get the preliminary approved today, but as soon as it's approved, we want to submit for High Point Village, okay? We're hoping possibly to get it in as quick as the twenty-fourth of October. And very quickly, we'll follow that up with Grand Vista. Does a developer understand that each phase or separate development requires final approval? And the answer to that is yes. Some areas for final consideration will be more like major subdivisions, where public streets, utilities, and residential lots are proposed. Does developer understand the subdivision regulations, the planned unit development, applications of regulation processes related to both subdivision regulations and planned unit development? Yes. We are aware of it. University of State understands the magnitude of this project and is looking forward to working with the planning commission, the city administration, a code enforcement officer, and other city boards and commissions. We will do everything in our power to get the necessary information to the correct parties as quickly as possible. Please be patient with us. We understand the importance of this project to both the local and regional economy. And we understand the city has the responsibility to make sure the proper review of this project occurs. We are wanting to work cooperatively, and that's one of the reasons why I was brought on. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them the best I can.
On the golf course? Are there any plans prepared yet?
Initial drawings or anything?
Well, one of the reasons I ask is, one of the items that's necessary yet under the wellhead protection plan is a submittal on a storage building. We did, we did, our consultant did reviews of the wellhead protection plan that's in place for maintaining the fairways and the greens, and the types of materials and chemicals, and so on. But we also noted that they had to submit the plans for the storage building and the spill protection plan for all of that. And all of the construction and structural plans for the golf course really need to be reviewed for wellhead protection. So if we want to get started in 2007, we're running out of time.
Well, it could be December of 2007.
I just wanted to be sure you knew that, because I know you weren't here when you did the wellhead protection review.
I appreciate that.
So now, didn't this one, this was, I think, didn't have a date on it, but it was about, it was supporting the zoning application I found in my file. Is there somewhere a list of the name of each proposed, that's probably going to be a PUD? And a rough idea of how many units are in, is there a list like that? I thought I saw one at one time.
There was a construction schedule submitted, which is...
Right, I don't think we brought that up.
Two pages, that went out to the year 2010.
Right.
Did we receive it in a packet? I didn't remember. I got a packet, but I don't remember seeing that in it.
Inspection schedule.
I remember seeing it.
I don't know.
Oh, I didn't bring the packet with me.
There's, you sent us a great big packet the other, not long ago. I think I have it upside down. This thing right here. Is it in this packet? Like this?
She keeps everything.
This one? I thought I went, yeah, I thought I went through that, I lost Exhibit D for a while, and then I got it back.
It's in that?
Well, it was over on another counter, spread out over my kitchen. Look at it. I do think.
It's on the back of it.
It's on the back of it, oh, okay, maybe I didn't look on the back.
It's attached to it.
I probably didn't look on the back.
There it is.
I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't look on the back, I guess.
I don't remember getting that.
Well, this is that whole packet I got the other day.
What you see when you go through it?
Well, I didn't get that.
You're going to see that on top, it's attached to that.
To that, see, that's what it's on. I didn't look, I don't think I looked under there. And then it's two, it goes like this.
Truly.
She didn't look over that far.
There's one right there.
No, I mean, I mean, I did get that packet.
I don't know.
I'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Yeah, okay.
You know, like I say, it runs out, it has the project, and what they're, how they're identifying it. The type of use, a number as to where it is at the site. And it runs clear out to 2010.
Three years.
Oh, I may be dead by then, so I'm not going to worry about that. I say that all the time.
Some of the things that are listed on here, Fred, are... Like Site One is purely commercial. So we probably don't need to do a PUD on that. Now, Site Two that you have down here is commercial slash multifamily. And that would be a mixed-use PUD then. I don't know what they're calling that. And I don't know what they're calling that.
Which one are you talking about?
Well, this thing has a residential breakdown, and I thought, boy, maybe we can use some of these names, because if we've got, if we're trying to look at a preliminary approval, you almost have to look at that, as to where they have the things, and, and say, okay, golf villas, there's 104 of them, but I see in your list, you've got that at stake. We have to guess, and it's dependent upon a lot of things at this stage, because it's vacation of the road right now. And they're, they're scattered in three different sites. I don't know if that's three different construction seasons. It's going to be, I'm not sure how we're going to approach how to, is this potentially three separate processes?
Right.
Because golf villas are, I think, are all down there basically on, on Armage Road as it exists now, or off golf.
Agreed. You?
And, but when I was looking through your list here, you, or they, they talked about 21 and 22 as being golf course villas.
It's 21, 21, 22.
2009 through 2010. 21 and 22. 22. That's still 22. And that's 21.
So, which would be right.
Right.
According to that, would be these and these around here.
Probably be 22, and then the other would be a separate. What number is this?
There were two 21s and two 22s. That's 21.
That's 21.
And then over it, it's 21, and then it's 22, 22 from there.
Yeah. 21 is that, is the U-shaped or whatever.
Right.
Then the next one over.
Then there's a little tiny bat, little tiny, just a tiny section.
Past that goes 22s.
And 22 wrapping around in the corner here. Okay.
I think that drawing doesn't match this.
But I think the High Point condos, even though it's two phases, is really all one submission.
Yes.
And then Grand Vista townhouse is 72, that's on the ridge across.
Grand Vista would be right here.
And.
High Point Village would be here.
And is that, now, he has a, you have a Phase 1.
In High Point Village.
2007, and Phase 2 in 2008. Might be just as easy to do that as one submission, because we're going to have to do the stormwater probably on it and everything else anyway.
Yeah.
Six and seven. The same time. Why would you do that one? Do that one? Yeah. We have one and two already.
Okay, so you're talking about High Point Village Phase 1 as a pro, as one project?
Well, that's what I'm asking, because they've got, on your projected development schedule, you have both High Point and Grand Vista, and maybe others that are on a Phase 1, Phase 2. But it seems to me that most of those are not going to be that radically different from each other, I mean, building-wise. You may be already needing some things and that kind of stuff. But when you plan it out and do the plans, it's, I mean, I, I've only seen for High Point Village, the PTI submission. And that got confusing, because the water PTI, up to getting to that driveway to the new 2.7, had four, I think, four buildings, and then when I looked at the stormwater PTI, it had three. So, so, and I see three under construction. But, but it really, I think the PTI was only for Phase 1.
That's probably true.
So, that's where the first decision point has to be. I mean, we could word our motion for a preliminary approval, saying all phases of the following probable PUDs. And we could go down through there and say, High Point Village, is that what you want to call it rather than condos, Grand Vista, Golf Villas, I don't know where the founders' cottages are. Is that the one to the left of the golf course? Clubhouse?
Could be right here.
Either to the right or the left, I don't know. Then there's Village Square condos, which are probably the other there. And Victorian Village condos. Then you have the cul-de-sac condos, which are yet to be platted.
Right.
And then Woodlands condos, I don't know where that is. I'd have to, you know.
We need a few little more descriptive terms here.
If, if we could get High Point Villa, Village, Grand Vista, and the clubhouse, you know, in some type of an approval process.
Is the club, what's going to be in the clubhouse? Let's talk about that a second. Are going to be residential living in the clubhouse?
No. Will be no residential living in the clubhouse.
Is that what the Conference Hotel is on here?
It will be the conference, when is the Conference Hotel scheduled?
2000.
Site prep 2007.
But where, where is the golf, how, golf club? This is the only thing I can see that makes it look like golf club.
Since third quarter of 2007.
But then it's a golf club. See, those don't say the same thing. They don't say the same names on there. I want the same names, maps.
Clubhouse would, I think would be item 12.
Because what we're trying.
Well, is that the Conference Hotel?
No, they're calling it the Conference Hotel.
It's as much for a marketing perspective, but it's also for the city's overall vision and planning perspective to say, we have an overall plan for this 820-some acres. There's going to be these kind of things in there. We grant, say, a preliminary approval on it, then people that are buying say, oh, okay, the city and the developer have agreed that that's what they're going to, the final plans aren't there, but that's the intent.
Right.
And it's more than just marketing.
Right.
We're somewhere in between. And then, yes, those specific units, as they come about, go ahead. A temporary, or a preliminary plan, or a preliminary approval can be dropped by the developer at any time, if you say, oh, I don't think I'm going to do that one, I will do something different. You just basically tell them, we're dropping that preliminary approval of this, and instead I want this. And that, that can be done without a problem.
For instance, here, if this area developed here in the condos, and it was very, hugely successive, successful, and we wanted to bring this down here and change those apartments to the condos, and we could do that.
And final, that's the difference between preliminary, yeah, preliminary is conceptual in my mind, it always has been. It doesn't require a great deal of.
Finality.
Engineering and, you know, architectural work. It's saying, it's really a developer saying to the city, does this fit your zoning? Does the planning commission basically agree to this? That that's what it is, so that I can then spend the design dollars to get the final.
Right.
And that's what, the way I've always viewed it to be. Then all the work happens. But if it, for some reason, you say, well, that just doesn't make any sense to do that in that particular location, we don't have its zones that's compatible, it's going to be right across from the factory, well, I don't think that's a good idea.
Or if this was a landfill.
Right.
You know, that may not fit into your, what you would see as the best use for the project property. And I, and I agree with, with what you're saying, and I think what's so vitally important.
Now, the preliminary approvals, I think, are good one year?
One year.
So there's going to be a series of requests for continuances. And, you know, so it would almost be like, if we grant this, then, like, every September, University of States is going to have to come back in and give us a status report on all these, and we can determine to continue or not. Then once a final is granted, I think it's five years, isn't it, you have to complete it? And again, they can, you know, if it's one of these, it's building 72 condos, and you've got 52 built, you can get a continuance. That's, that's possible to do. But we, we just don't want it hanging out there that 20 years from now, you still have approval to do this exact condo.
Yeah, and that's not, that's really not what we're looking for, but the momentum is beginning to build in this project. And, and there's a lot of excitement and a lot of interest. We've got 10 single-family homes under construction. These are under construction, and there's a lot of interest in it. And, and I think what is vitally important for the, both the University of States and the city, is, is to cooperate together, and I, and I, and I mean that in the best way. We still hear terms of if this project is going to happen, and I think we're almost beyond that point.
Oh, I think we are.
Yeah. And, and the project is going to happen, and I think now what we're saying is, how can we, how can I respond to the city? How can the city, you know, we're, we're in that kind of cooperative area. And there's been some rough roads, but I think any project that's worthwhile doing has those kinds of bumps in the road. But, you know, there's, there's so much excitement about this and the possibilities, and the golf course is going to happen, and the clubhouse, and, and there's just a real need for this type. And, and I'll be very honest with you, one of my decisions on whether or not to even come and, and work as a consultant, is the fact that I could work with City of Athens. I, Mayor and I have worked on several different projects together, and, and I thought, you know, if it was outside the city, I think I'd have had to think about it a little bit, because, you know, the, the rules and the guidelines that you have, that you're, you're trying to, and I'm very much aware that, you know, the city on numerous occasions have helped University of States by them, by not allowing them to make a decision that would have hurt them. I think that these being R3s, they want to, they want to make a difference.
They want to be.
Yeah. Which would have created a problem.
Oh, yeah.
That, that, I understand that, and you understand that, and, and from their standpoint, they're just, they're just anxious to get the Friday going. That's really what, and, and so some of their getting the cart, or cart before the horse has been, I think, has been legitimate. I have to admit to you that, yeah, they've gotten occasioned ahead of themselves. Well, I'll get in trouble for that one. But.
Now, a question. One of the cost factors in this is that by waiving the preliminary approval on all of these eight or nine, or maybe more, units, they're a fee.
I understand that.
And I guess the good part of it is, you lock in your price, you know, in case those future increases. The bad part is you're upfronting some dollars, and I just wanted to make sure the developer understood that.
Even the developers will.
All right. And.
Yes, okay.
Now, do we have, have we received any, please, Steve?
No, I said just reflect. He hasn't.
There wasn't determination of the amount of fees I discussed with Nancy and with Mr. Holmes. We were within, even as, hard to count up the number of fees that might be due on this, we were within $50, so.
Yeah.
We were pretty close on agreement as to what that fee should be.
My, I got a question about the process, if we get, when we get preliminary approval. Does that go to the city council too, or are they just on the final?
They're just on the final.
Just on the final. Okay.
I mean, the reality, on a preliminary approval, let's say we do preliminary approval on all of them, subject to receiving the fee. Your engineering people can, really could have before today, come in and say, these are my design plans for Phase 1. City, start doing staff and technical review. Because well then, from that, determine, okay, do I need an outside engineer to look at any of this? Do I, what do I have to do on soil stability, placement of fire, you know, all those different things can start. Because what, the planning commission will first ask of any submission that's final, that's not necessarily even a final form submission, but on a final form is for technical review from staff. And then once those questions have been addressed, staff and the developer agree on or agree to disagree, then it comes to us.
Okay.
And then we have a set thing of whether or not there is or is not a public hearing, when, you know, how long we have to wait, who we have to notify, all of that process, and then council has a prescribed process too.
Fee is not a problem. I, or how, is there any timing on frame on preliminary approval? Do you have any idea, or?
I don't know. I want to gather commissioner.
Yeah, we can, we can do it now, or we, we can have other questions.
You feel you have enough today to do it? You have all your questions? We've had a lot of questions.
You don't want to have the revised, I mean, the, the clarification on the maps before we do it?
Yeah, I do.
I would like to.
I would too.
So, so as soon as you could.
Get to the next meeting.
Could we make a contingent upon the, the maps being approved?
Nope.
No, because we've had a lot of trouble with these maps, and I can, let's, we may have to get them done again.
I'd really like to see one that I can transfer and visualize it.
Steve, when you give in timestamp it, so we know what's the latest one.
Yeah, that's, well, that's the trouble is, there are too many of them. This is my problem, and I spread them out on the shelf, and I looked at all the little numbers, and then you started from that, and then we have this, and, and I always thought I was pretty bright, but I was having trouble with it. And I would like to see that before I do it. Now, I, if you can get them done, and they get in, what's our next meeting? What's meeting is this? This is our second meeting.
Second October meeting.
So we don't meet until November 1st Thursday.
November 2nd.
November 2nd is our next meeting. So you would have till November, well, to get it, you'd have to get it in a little few days before that, so we get them on Thursday before that, but.
Okay.
So that gives you some time.
Okay. All right. We can do that, yeah.
In the meantime, too, as the mayor mentioned, some of that more technical work.
You started.
Yeah, you could, that sort of thing. We don't tell you how you have to do your other work, if you can do it the way you want to do it.
We don't have to have approval to do the reviews. I mean, we're, we're there all the time, whether you're approved or not.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll start with the staff reviews right away, you know, because it's, anything that we can, can catch ahead of time. Do you want to make a, do you?
It's important that we all have the same picture we're looking at, so we know what we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is yours.
All righty.
Okay, do we have any communications? We had a communication, didn't we? No, that was, that was about the Kincaid thing. I didn't have any communications. Do you have any communications? We had, I think we had things from.
I have the comments.
The comments from the, well, I had some from the OP, Ohio EPA, didn't we get those someplace?
Yeah.
About, that's about out in Whitman Woods.
Yeah, next to it.
Oh, next to the area, yeah, and, not Whitman, but.
Walnut Grove.
Walnut Grove. And, that way. And then we had comments on the comprehensive plan, which we have approved and submitted, things that they wanted changed, but I got those in the mail. And we had another thing on the changeable signs. Now, we haven't done anything about that. There, we had this one, which adds to our other stack.
All right.
I agree with you. So I don't know what you want to do about that, or if you have anything to add. I had a question about the sign at CDS.
Yes.
I don't know. It was, they just thought it was too big, and they want to know if it's going to have changeable things on it or what.
It will. The bottom panel is a changeable copy type sign. CDS is aware of our current restrictions on movement to attract attention. The sign has been installed as proposed, 40 feet in height and 100 square feet in face area, so that's, that's the max sign.
That's only 40 feet high?
Yes.
It looks so much higher than that for some reason. Well, I guess that's the thing, and that was the complaint to me, they thought it wasn't. So I drove by, and I thought, but you always know that you can't tell by just driving by, but it did look more than that, looked so much higher than everybody else.
I did receive the same concerns, and, and rather than getting in a bucket truck and, and measuring it, what I did was just use simple geometry, wheeled out 40 feet from the base of the sign, put a marker in the ground, and then backed off and got that 40 feet in a certain scale or in perspective, tipped it up at a 90-degree angle, and that 40 feet laying flat is 40 feet up in the air. And the sign is forty feet or less, I think it's a little less actually, if you actually measured it. I think it's just because people are not used to seeing a maxed-out sign. I see more monument-type signs.
The building sits down behind it too.
It's lower, is it out, it seems like it's awfully close to the road to me, too. But I, I'm sure it's, you know, it's this whole chain that you keep to.
It's very close to the right-of-way line and the front property line, and signs can be that close. Um, the regulations used to say a sign base had to be back five feet, but then it allowed it to extend out over the right-of-way and be within two feet of the curb. So, when the sign regulations were changed, that was kind of a compromise. Move your sign closer, but you're not allowed to put it out over the right-of-way. Buildings are allowed in that zone to be right on the front property line with no setback, so why was there five feet for the, that was part of the rationale? Why a sign back five feet, but a building could be right up there? So, just so everybody knows, the sign, without going out in a bucket truck, it does appear to be compliant with the best basic geometry that, kind of caveman geometry there, but...
Well, I just told the person who asked me, I, I left a message on their phone that I, you know, I went and looked at it, but I would have to check on it. It's probably the same person, I don't remember the name, so...
One other thing I, I don't know, I guess I'll say unfortunately for you guys, I will be adding to your pile of things to look at soon, and I had promised a while back, and I, I hadn't done it yet, but since it's political season, I have had very good voluntary compliance with the parties and candidates on meeting our sign regulations, which are unconstitutional. What I have for you, and I'll just go ahead and give it to you pretty soon, is a, uh, Political Signs and Constitution, Constitutionality. It's a document published by, and I don't know exactly the right organization, but when you get it, you'll see it. It explains what you can and can't do as related to the Constitution and restrictions on freedom of speech. Um, also, I'll give you a copy of the court case from Painesville, Ohio. The state Supreme Court refused to hear that case, and that's the basis on which all, in Ohio in particular, all political sign regulations have been found to be unconstitutional, if similar to Payne, Painesville's. And then hopefully I'll be able to also give you a document that has survived legal challenge already. So, hopefully we can just take out the word, whatever city, insert the word Athens, give it a review, and hopefully then that's something that we can adopt, go and not having to go through all of that legal challenge.
Well, can you have, can prohibiting them in the right-of-way is, is legal?
I am doing that now, and I'd mentioned in the past...
Doesn't Charlie Wilson have all his signs in the right-of-way?
Um, they're now, they're now in the dumpster. They're all in the dumpster in Cochise. There's one on the on-ramp to the Plains off East State, I'll pick one up on the way home.
Yeah. People pick, my signs up from my road on my house, and they're in the right place, but I was gonna tell somebody who was here, they took her sign away from me. People just take them, I don't put them in the right-of-way.
I had mentioned that before too, that anything, that's a separate section, and I don't think that can be challenged. Nobody can put things out in the city right-of-way.
Put anything in the right-of-way. Well, you, we can't put a, we can't put a welcome sign in that right-of-way for the state there, you know, we wanted to put a house, sign for the city, and there's a big no-no because it's their right-of-way, so...
Yeah, I collected quite a few signs actually at the intersection of six-eighty-two and Richland the other night. I've had an officer out on East State Street. I actually did some more of East State and the far east side of East State over the weekend.
I think Abdallah has his, his Realtor's sign in the right-of-way at Stimson, and where that road comes in, which is the wrong name, it's not really Rockriffel, that's another name.
Yeah, that's not in the city though.
Does he have it in the spot that's not the city?
Yeah, yeah, that's not the city.
Okay. Well, and then my other question about signs is, we have for rent signs up constantly, and we have banners on houses saying for rent, are we gonna have those up all the time? Because they're always for rent. You know, the kids have this thing where they go out, when they get back to school and they rent for next year, and then people put signs on their house for all year long, I swear.
Um, actually, if you talk to landlords, they are always for rent.
Well, I know they are, but I think that's kind of using the sign ordinance term funny.
Yeah, the, well, maybe that's something else can be looked at when we do the political signs, because the way it's written out just says, the sign has to come down within two weeks after the closing of the sale of a property or the lease.
Yeah.
Kind of read between, well, the landlords then, or the realtors wanna read between the lines, and then in two weeks I can put it back up again. So, there's, there's no continuing prohibition, there's just like a drop-dead date. Um, you know, I don't, and I would have no way of knowing when leases are signed, to be honest.
Well, you wouldn't, and there's a sign, one of those houses along where I signed out, just today, has a banner on the side of the house saying for rent. I forget where it was when I signed it.
Some districts, the size of a temporary real estate sign is regulated by the zoning district. I had complaints a while back about real estate signs on Richland Avenue. Um, that's a B-two zone, and the maximum freestanding real estate sign can be as much as the freestanding sign, which would be fifty feet. In residential zones, it's limited to those small signs. In business zones, you know, um, I know every night going home on Columbus Road, there's some commercial property for sale, and the sign ordinance allows for those types of signs, real estate signs in commercial districts or non-residential to be much larger. So, even though you think you're driving through a residential neighborhood, you're driving through a business district which allows a larger sign.
What about...
Same for the temporary real estate, or the for rent banners.
For rent, well, those are a real problem, but what about the, I'm not gonna name the company who has his signs up on all these rental properties, and I thought we did, got rid of that a long time ago, that they can't say somebody's, you know, what is it, university...
Yeah, the original signs were cited by myself. Um, that was, that my decision was appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who upheld my decision. That particular appellant then took it as their allowed-by right to go to common police court, and the common police court judge upheld my decision and the zoning boards, that a sign cannot say managed by a certain company. It was off-site advertising if it said managed by. However, in the judge's decision, it also said if it said for rent, it would be then similar to a permitted real estate sign. So, the manage, managed by part disappeared, yeah, if you go look at them, they'll say for rent.
Can I rip them down to look at them so I can read them, 'cause I can't read them from the skirt from my car? Suppose I could get away with that? Is anybody watching?
I would, I would admit guilt to that before it happened.
So, that's what happened on that. Just a simple change in the language made it a sign, changed the sign. Changing one word changed the sign.
Okay, well, I wanna put down on some agenda to change that, because I, you know, I live in the central city, and we all know that putting those signs up there gives an indication on this is gonna turn into a slum, and I'm, I'm, you know, it does, when you park on the grass, and you have the sofas out, and you have the signs on the thing, so...
The flip side of that is, I know some council members, and I can recall Mr. Tamke in particular, had said that he thought it may be desirable, because it did identify who the owner was and how to contact someone, also...
I think they shot him down on that, though.
Right, that never, right, that never did happen, but, and from the code enforcement side of it too, if we're driving down the street, we know right away, or we can easily find out, hey, there's a problem here, who do we contact? Now, we can go back to the office and look that up pretty quickly, too.
But I don't wanna make it easy for you, I wanna make it nice for me and my neighbors.
And the only thing I can think about too would be to limit, limit the placement and location of those signs, so they aren't distracting, but can then possibly too serve a useful purpose, useful function. So, we can talk about that too.
If they have a brass, a small brass plate that's extremely expensive, that has one name on it, I'll go for it, but if...
One of the things that's gonna come out in the discussion about political signs is that the appellate court's ruling said that you have to treat all temporary signs the same, the same way. So, you can't say, well, one type is permitted, one type is okay without a permit, one can be this size, one has to be this size, one can be up this long, one has to come down this quickly. That's where you get into your problem. So, whatever the final proposal will be, will be a blending of things that essentially treat all these signs as equally as possible, um, you know, without having one or another be a particular distraction. They're, they'll, they'll all be either as pleasing to the eye or distracting as the other.
Well, if we could do away with all of them and suit me, and then have all the big signs, just little signs, and you go in the driveway, and, you know, everybody knows where I stand on signs.
There are some realtors who do have smaller signs now, I don't know if you've noticed those or not, too. Some do have smaller signs.
I know, but I get tired of looking them, well, I have them in my yard, but I still don't like them. Okay, uh, announcements, another business, our next meeting is whatever that, what'd[1720.52]